Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this special council meeting for the Borough Council, for the Borough of Gettysburg, July 28, 2025 at 6:30 PM. This is the first public hearing on proposed use of community development block grant funding. As this is an official proceeding, a hearing, we do need a roll call, recording of everybody who is in the room. That includes the names of media as well as members of the public. So we will go around the room, starting with Mr. Carr, and we'll work our way all the way over here.
Chad Allen Carr, Council Member at Large.
Alicia Sanders, Council Member.
Chris Berger, Councilman.
Matthew Moon, Council Member.
Harry Eastman, Solicitor.
Sarah Stahl, Borough Secretary.
Charles Gable, Borough Manager.
Troy Truax, Michael Baker.
Richard Frankie, Gettysburg Times.
Back here, sir.
Steve Toddus, Gettysburg Herald.
Thank you.
Leslie Morris, Gettysburg Press.
Thank you. In the back. Thank you, sir.
Joan Garrett, Community Media.
Thank you.
Brandon Stone, Park Chair.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. This is the first of two hearings where we will hear from the public as to suggestions on what we could possibly spend our CDBG allocations on. There will be a second hearing where we will also hear from the public. That will be on August 25 at 6:30 PM as well. Mr. Gable.
Gettysburg Borough remains a direct entitlement community through housing and urban development. This year's allocation for the 2025 program year for community development block grant programming is $126,173. Tonight's meeting, the purpose of tonight's meeting is simply to not for the council to opine on their policy options, but rather to hear directly from the public on what they feel these funds should be used for as it relates to the program CDBG.
We will now take public comment. Please use the podium, use the microphone, please. State your name and address. We're going to ask you to limit yourself to five minutes, please.
Wait, is that true? Good evening. My name is Brandon Stone. Actually, no. And I am the chair.
One correction, sorry. You don't have to limit yourself to five minutes. I was mistaken.
I am limited to five minutes, but thank you. I am the Chair of the Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board. I would like to offer a few comments regarding this year's CDBG funds allocation and encourage the Borough to broaden its scope in the application to include preservation-focused projects that directly support our community's historic identity and livability. While these funds are often used towards economic improvement and development or infrastructural upgrades, I believe we should consider how they can advance long-term preservation goals within the Borough, particularly in areas of cultural significance or visual despair. I'd like to suggest four potential uses of the $126,000 allocation. First, the conversion of Lincoln Lane into a pedestrian corridor to access Lincoln Cemetery, 439 401 South Washington Street. This small but meaningful streetscape improvement would enhance accessibility to a nationally significant historic site and reinforce our community's commitment to honoring African-American heritage. Second, the preservation of the stained glass windows in the AME Church, 269 South Washington Street. The stained glass windows in the historic St. Paul's AME Church is in urgent need of stabilization. These windows are not only architecturally valuable, they are symbolic of Gettysburg's black religious and civic legacy. Funding could help preserve this cultural treasure for future generations. Third, blight remediation and assistance for the Jack Hopkins House, 219 South Washington Street. This property is owned by the Adams County Historical Society and is associated with Civil War veteran and community leader Jack Hopkins. Stabilization of this structure would eliminate a visual blight while preserving a site important to our local history. And if you will, in addition to the preservation and accessibility, we should also consider how quality and life improvements can align with environmental responsibility, long-term sustainability, and livability. The fourth suggestion relates to a concept that I've been actively championing the last couple of years. This would be a residential dark sky lighting project. This pilot would retrofit a small number of residential streetlights with dark sky compliant fixtures, reducing glare, improving night sky visibility, and supporting energy efficiency. It could serve as a model for future lighting improvements across the Borough that balance safety, environmental stewardship, and neighborhood character. This project could also help demonstrate how lighting zones, as defined under the dark sky standards, can guide appropriate lighting levels based upon neighborhood context, ensuring illumination is scaled for public, residential, and commercial settings without overlighting. I hope the Borough will give serious considerations to these alternatives and recognize that historic preservation is not separate from community development. It is essential to it. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any further public comment? All right. If there's no further discussion from the public, we will adjourn. Thank you all.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this meeting. This is a work session for the Council of Gettysburg for Monday, July 28, 2025 at 7:00 PM. An executive session of the Borough Council was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the July 14, 2025 Borough Council General Business Meeting, consistent with Section 708A-1 and Section 708A-5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly work session, public meeting, consistent with the Section 708A-1 and Section 708A-5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: One, to provide information and to discuss matters involving the employment appointment, the terms and conditions of employment of current or prospective borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of borough business, which, if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality that are protected by law. We do not have any special presentations this evening, so we will start right up with public comment. This first section of the evening is limited to items appearing on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to make a public comment, we ask that you use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence, and limit your comments to five minutes. Is there any public comment?
I'm sorry, just to be clear, I live at Hillcrest. Okay. All right. Hi, my name is Catherine Yarushuk, and I live at 47 Locust Avenue. And I'm here because of the original request that was put forward by Katie Daughter, she's my neighbor, to have signage put for residential parking on Hillcrest Avenue. I live there, and parking has become sort of increasingly an issue. It's definitely an issue during special events, parades, and such, but adding to any special events, we've had some changes with the school system, putting paid parking signs. People have started to park up on Hillcrest, and there are, I think, 36 parking spots. There's a limited number of parking spots. In addition, the, sorry, the Brick House Inn, I think, is under new leadership, new management, and they have increased ghost tours, like multiple coast tours, and Civil War tours, Battlefield tours, and their overflow, they have a small parking lot, so staff, tour guides, and participants to those tours are parking on Hillcrest. So the problem lies in the lower part of that hill are rental, there's rental properties. I live in, I'm a renter, and my unit, though it looks like two, two, two units, there's, it's been changed to be four separate units. So for the upper floors, those are four cars just in that, those two units. Like, I have family, so we have two cars in our household. And my neighbor on the second, on our floor, has two cars at least. The lower units have their own off-street parking. The unit next to me, which is Katie from who presented last time, is also deceiving in that it's four to five units. One of the units has its own parking in the back, which leaves three units with one to two to three cars per unit, if I'm making sense. So it becomes an issue that we often don't have a parking spot. We don't have off-street parking, and we live there, and we are renters, we pay our taxes. It does not affect the upper part of the hill. They have off-street parking, and I supplied some pictures if you were needing to just see that visual. On the odd side, they have, on the backside of their units, they all have, those houses all have off, a driveway in the back. On the even side, they all have driveways. When you get down to the last three units, or three house properties, we don't have. I do not have off-street parking, zero. So it's problematic. Some of my neighbors are disabled, and that displaces them, and that makes it even more difficult. I don't have that challenge, but my, I have neighbors that do. So I'm also speaking on their behalf. I would have had a crew here, but several, one is disabled and was in pain and could not be here. His wife works till nine o'clock. My other neighbor is out of town, but he's dealing with cancer. He's a veteran and dealing with cancer, but he's away on retreat. So we also have a unique situation in that the unit next to me, Katie's building, her landlord owns a property on the corner of Baltimore and Locust. This is another piece. Locust has no street parking whatsoever. It's a very short street. There's no parking, off-street parking. My building is at an angle, so my address is a Locust Street address. My same building neighbor, Russ and Aaron, are Hillcrest. So I technically, I guess, am not even a resident of Hillcrest, but I don't have anywhere to park. So I also have neighbors on this Baltimore and Locust Street that it's a four units, and they only have three parking lots, parking spots. So we have residents from that building that park on Hillcrest. And so I think that in educating myself, I think that I would need to apply if the, if the residential parking were in effect, I could apply for a BECA, some, I forget the term, what hardship, thank you so much, hardship. And I have someone from that address that he would also have to apply for hardship. So I'm just putting forth, thank you, that's my five minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Public comment? Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening? All right, we will move on. Our first issue of new business today has to do with illuminated roadway speeding signage. Mr. Berger and I had asked Sergeant Evans to start thinking about a strategy for targeted speed enforcement, as well as to procure some pricing for us for the sort of illuminated speed signs that tell you how fast you're going, and to help us identify a quantity, a price, and strategic places we might put these either on a temporary or transitory or even permanent basis throughout the borough. Unfortunately, Sergeant Evans was struck ill today and had to call out of work, so I believe Mr. Gable has some of his information.
Yeah, to follow up on President Moon's introductory remarks there, Sergeant Evans has looked into the idea of getting these illuminated roadway speed signage, you know, so when you're coming into the borough, zipping along at 45 miles an hour, and suddenly you're supposed to be going 25 miles an hour, there's a sign that illuminates in front of your face and says essentially, "Slow down." Depending on the bells and whistles of the types of signage, they would range anywhere from $3,800 to $9,000. It would be his recommendation to do the solar-powered units. That way, they could be easily moved around the borough at will, depending on where the greatest need is, as opposed to hardwiring them in with conduit and electric wiring. Initially, his thoughts are at the following five locations, including Baltimore Street, Hanover, Beaufort, West Middle, and York Streets. Those are particularly problematic areas. We often get complaints about them. There are several other locations in town where these could be deployed, but right now, he's, he's proposing the purchase of perhaps five of those. And if this is the direction council would like, we could formalize that into our budget preparation discussions later this year, and when we talk about 2026 budgeting.
So when Chris and I met with Sergeant Evans, we put together sort of a casual, just off-the-cuff sort of list of likely locations for enforcement, some based on our own observances, some based on direct complaints we've received from, from folks living here in the borough. I did type up a more formal list for him. I was prepared to think of maybe eight to 10 locations if we were to do these permanent, but if we do want to do them on a more temporary basis, move them around, use them as a tool to just sort of let folks know that they're not necessarily operating their vehicles in the safest manner possible, or in accordance with the law. Sometimes just the visual reinforcement might be enough, but I believe the units we were specifically wanting to see, which are solar-powered, battery-operated units that can be moved from street pole to street pole, were somewhere around 8,000. So five of those would be, you know, not in substantial cost, and we could do more. So I guess the question we're asking of council members present here tonight, we have two possible courses. We can jump right on in and buy a bunch of them with capital reserves money, which might not always be the most prudent use of our capital reserves, or we can be a little bit more strategic and work them into our budget considerations for the next fiscal year. That might be the more prudent way to go, as there are some unanswered questions at this time, particularly as it relates to whether we can implement them on state-owned roads, and if there's permitting we would have to acquire through PennDOT. So we do have some unanswered questions. So what I would like to hear from council members tonight, if you don't mind, is do you think this is a good idea to reduce a pretty rampant issue in the borough, according to, you know, the way some people see it? Or do you think this is an expense we should forego? Or is it something you think we should pursue now? Is it something you think we should pursue in the coming year?
I was going to say, I think it's a great idea. I remember we spoke with Sergeant Evans a few weeks ago, and he expressed a need to start to slow some cars down in the, in the area. So I think it's a good idea, especially in light of, you know, the America 250 celebration, And I think it's important that we, if possible, start getting those, uh, that signage out ahead of the game, ahead of the time.
I like the idea of, um, the solar, uh, units so that we can move them around. Um, I'm just searching through my emails now and we've been talking about this since I joined council in 2021. Um, some other sites that residents have complained about numerous times, uh, is Springs Avenue, South Howard, and specifically Fourth Street. There's a lot going on on Fourth Street that shouldn't happen, and it's to do with cars. Very dangerous. Thank you.
Yeah, some, uh, areas of regular concern that have been brought to our attention include Fourth Street, Long Lane, south of the Rec Park, um, Springs Avenue, um, Hanover Street, particularly between Third and Fifth, um, and a few other places too. So there's actually sort of two different tranches of, of streets we could choose to do enforcement on. One would be those sort of radial streets that come into the borough where people are moving from a higher rate of speed to a lower rate of speed. And that is, I think that is wise to pursue ahead of something that's going to bring, you know, countless extra people to town, uh, for next year. But additionally, when, if we start to look at those other sort of peripheral streets throughout the borough where, where, uh, high rates of speed have been observed by, um, taxpayers, um, we start to see that locals know where sort of the roads that are less traveled, as it were, are, and they can use them to get through the borough at a high rate of speed. And I think we might see more of that if the town were congested with a lot of visitor traffic as well. So I don't know that we would be doing ourselves favors by ignoring some of these more, um, problematic areas that, uh, locals might exploit rather than visitors. I mean, we might be wiser to pursue both. I don't know. What are your thoughts, Peter?
Um, yeah, I, yeah, I certainly support it. You know, if it's $40,000, looks like, or maybe more, if we decide to go with a higher quantity, I think that's, if it saves one life, that's worth it.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Would folks want to start with a lower quantity, five or six, and target specific areas and then see if we want to get more or what would be the, and, uh, secondarily, is that something you want to do in the short term or do we want to wait for the next budgetary cycle?
I know that they're already, uh, doing targeted enforcement since we've been talking. In fact, when I was walking to the Y today, uh, I saw them on Buford, uh, actually going after, uh, somebody speeding, which that's a, uh, an area.
Yeah.
I don't, I think we could wait for budget season. I think we should talk about this and kind of get the quantity and, you know, how we're gonna do it, how we're gonna move them around, but I'm definitely support the idea.
Anyone else?
I think if there's some funds available now, even if it's just to get a few of them as a, as a test run now to see how this, how they work and if we like them, what model it is, and then we can go into budget season saying, "Yeah, we like this, let's get more of them."
Yeah, I mean, the costs are not gonna go down over time. The longer we wait, the more we incur.
I just know this has been something that residents have, on several different streets, as we know, have been pleading with us for some time.
Okay.
And I'm thankful to the police department for, uh, stepping up.
Sure. So we got to wait, wait for next year? We got to act now?
Well, actually, I, I like the idea of getting a few to see how they work out.
Yeah. And we could, we could target those residential streets that are problematic while we're answering our PennDOT permitting questions as well.
If I may, so, um, Fourth Street's a local street, it's not a state route, so we would be able to do that sooner than later. We would not have to wait for
Yeah.
the blessing of PennDOT if, if that's even required.
Yeah. Alyssa, did you have a?
Sure, I'd say get some now. And, um, in the interim, you can figure out which state roads or state streets we wouldn't be able to put them on and, and sort of, yeah, sort of use the local streets as our pilot.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I agree with Mr. Carr. What fund would this come out of?
I would suggest coming out of Capital Projects Fund 18 or Capital Reserves, which is Fund 30. Uh, Fund 30 is, um, that's exactly what it is. It's revert reserves that we have that have not been earmarked for a specific project yet. Once council earmarks for a project, then those funds are moved to Fund 18 until the project is complete.
So it is a fund we will be dipping heavily into in the next fiscal year, as, as we do every year as we identify capital projects. So we can spend 50 now, but it's just, it's 50 we won't have for other projects next year. Okay. Well, um, I feel like I'm hearing a majority opinion here that we should move ahead with four or five of these units, um, something that Sergeant Evans thinks will be effective and that we have a funding stream in mind.
I've asked Sergeant Evans to put a meeting together with myself, himself, uh, and Public Works Director Harbaugh, uh, so that we can talk about the logistics of implementing those.
Super. All right. Anybody have any other comments on that subject? Great, thank you. Uh, that's gonna take us on to current and old business, Chapter 15 Parking Amendments. Ms. Fissell.
If I may, real quick, before we, uh, turn this over to Parking Manager Fissell, um, I thought maybe, because the Hillcrest RPP, uh, request was tabled at the last, uh, business meeting, uh, so I had asked Solicitor Eastman to kind of go through, uh, the logistics of, uh, the mechanics of preparing an ordinance for adoption, um, and then I think it would be beneficial for the council to kind of weigh in on your thoughts on the pros and cons of making, uh, Hillcrest RPP. And then I know that, uh, Manager Fissell has, uh, suggestions for maybe a middle ground, uh, if that's something the council would be interested in entertaining. So if I may, I'll turn it over to Solicitor for your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Gable. With reference to the, um, proposed ordinance, which was tabled, um, for action at the July 8th, excuse me, July 14th meeting, um, that's a proposed ordinance which would amend, it's Chapter 15, Part 10, um, which, um, governs our residential parking permit system. The proposed ordinance would actually modify Section 1,003 of the Code of Ordinances and simply for the purposes of adding Hillcrest Place as a residential parking permit street. Just to go briefly over the legislative history, um, the concept was first introduced to council at its April 28, 2025 workshop. It received a positive, um, response, um, so it was placed on the agenda for the, uh, May 12, 2025, um, council meeting. At that time, council took, um, or took action to authorize the preparation of the proposed, um, ordinance. At that time, there was also a petition of residents that filed in favor of the proposed ordinance, and so that was received by the council on May the 12th, 2025. Next, at our June 9, 2025 meeting, Borough Council then, after reviewing the proposed ordinance, authorized the publication for an intended enactment of the proposed ordinance. Consistent with council's action, the ordinance was finalized and it was published in the Gettysburg Times for intended enactment at the Ju- July 14th meeting. That advertisement appeared in the Gettysburg Times on June 28th. On July 8th, the borough received, um, what I'm gonna call an opposition petition, um, which, uh, a few days before the council meeting, so as we all know, at the July 14th meeting, um, council voted to amend its agenda to essentially table the, its vote on the enactment of the proposed, uh, ordinance. And of course, now it's a matter that we've brought back, um, for, uh, the work session, um, under current and old business. One of the things I would point out are, for council is, and it's very important to understand kind of the purpose, the provisions of the ordinance as it was originally enacted, because we're moved, or your action potentially would amend that ordinance. Ordinance 110490 was enacted by Gettysburg Borough Council on September 13th of 1990. So that was 35 years ago, or put in other terms, 390 ordinances ago, that, uh, for the, uh, the council. One of the things that I think is important for, um, council to think and is going back to taking a look at, this ordinance specifically had its, had specific findings and purposes, if you will. Council in, in 1990 determined that certain residential areas in the borough were the subject to commuter and student vehicle parking, thereby depriving the residents of those areas of spaces in which to park their own vehicles. Council went on to say that the establishment of a parking permit program for certain affected residential areas should facilitate efficient movement of traffic by providing for parking preferences. Therefore, the borough considers it to be in the interest of the people of the borough to provide for the establishment of a residential parking per, program and to ensure primary access is available to parking spaces for borough, um, residents. Due to the, uh, at that time, due to the incursion, uh, or I guess, uh, of commuter and student vehicle parking in the residential neighborhoods, I would think that would have been on the northern portion of the borough, um, the council determined it was important to provide primary parking areas for the residents and that it was in the best interest of all of the, um, residents of the borough that this should be done. I would note, and, um, we had a speaker this evening who indicated that, um, she's a tenant. Um, I think it's very important to understand that, um, the council in doing this did not make a distinction between property owners and tenants. The intended beneficiaries of that, of that ordinance were the residents, the people who resided in and along a certain street. Also, I think it's important, because, again, the amendment is to add a street, you need to take a look at what actually the ordinance does. And the ordinance prohibition is set forth in Section 1,004, which is parking on residential parking permit streets. And this is the prohibition. "It shall be a violation of this part for any person to park or leave standing a motor vehicle on any portions of the street set forth in Section 15-1,003 for a period of more than two hours a day, other than holidays unless such vehicle displays a current residential parking permit of one of the types and in the location here and after set forth in this part." Very, um, importantly, council, because it was a, a new program, council set forth or indicated, enacted a section that dealt with study period. Essentially, uh, council said, actually, council said, "It is the intention of the Borough Council to study the operation of this part for a period of six months. After March 1st, 1991, Borough Council will consider petitions by persons residing abutting portions of streets not set forth in the ordinance above, not having parking meters on which parking of motor vehicles is otherwise allowed, seeking to have such portions of those streets made subject to this part." So they wanted, once they went through this six-month, uh, period, they wanted to see if there were other residents that would be interested in, um, having portions of their streets added, or streets or portions of the street. Also, they said that they would consider positions or petitions from residents to have a portion of the streets that they had set forth or they had already set apart, um, to remove those from the ordinance. Not, and it, I think this is important too, because I, this is how I believe you are currently proceeding. "Notwithstanding the aforementioned petition process, the Borough Council may also, on its own initiative, designate additional streets or portions thereof as residential parking permit streets, and may also delete any streets or portions of streets as residential parking permit streets." So, out of, uh, in 1990, council designated 14 streets or portions of streets as residential parking permit streets. Subsequently, since that time, council has added 14 different streets or portions of streets to the ordinance. Only one street has been removed, and that was West Broadway. And I don't believe that was by petition. Was that? No. That was a discretionary move on the part of the council, and I believe there were other reasons that were, um, triggering that, but, um, so essentially 14 streets originally, 14 streets added, one street removed. This proposed ordinance has been initiated at the discretion of the Borough Council. That's why I said I believe that's the process we're going, based on the recommendation of the Borough Administration after receiving input from residents of Hillcrest Place. So this is not a petition process. However, based on information that was provided by the parking manager, and, um, it appears that there would be 15 residential units on Hillcrest Place, um, based on the documentation that was filed. And again, this is not determinative, but just so that you know, it would appear that eight units on Hillcrest Place are in favor of the RPP designation, six units against RPP designation, and one unit was silent, whether or not, uh, they were in favor or against. Again, this is not determinative. I believe that the issue before council, um, should it proceed to go ahead? And at this juncture, because we've tabled the matter, um, if we are to place it back on the council agenda for the August meeting, what it would be, we would go, we would essentially revert back to June, if you will. The ordinance has been prepared, but what we would need to do under the borough code would be to advertise it for intended enactment at the September meeting. The issue that is before council, is it generally in the best interest of the residents of Hillcrest Place to have the street designated or a residential parking permit street? Or in the alternative, would it generally not benefit the residents of Hillcrest Place and not be in their best interest in having Hillcrest Place designated as a residential parking permit street? Of course, I guess the potential harm would be someone who, um, would have to purchase a, uh, permit who would, um, who currently is able to park on the street and freely and, uh, they are incurring a cost. However, it is a voluntary program, essentially, um, so all, any persons who have, um, off-street parking don't have to participate. They can just continue to park in their own, on their own premises. This is not determinative, but this is for council to consider, and this is a recommendation. You're not legally required. Um, a lot of this is because we've gone so far through the process and the ordinance has been prepared, it's been previously advertised, um, that you would consider possibly the enactment of the ordinance as council originally intended. And that's what council did. They would have authorized it in, in August of, of 1990, enacted it, um, in September of 1990 with a study period, essentially. Um, and if the ordinance does not end up benefiting, um, the residents of Hillcrest Place, then certainly council can revisit that, that matter and make a reverse determination or candidly, if there is a petition filed by more units that have currently filed, um, that, uh, that it be removed certainly during that study period, um, council should or could, can, at that point, consider removing it from the RPP system. removing it from the RPP system.
All right, discussion.
I can start. I'm inclined to, to keep the status quo, reviewing the petition of people that supported it, but relatively about the same amount of people don't want it. And I would think if you're going to have a permanent change to your, to your neighborhood, especially parking, it would have to have a critical mass, a lot more than, to me, it's half of the people support it and half of the people don't. I have gone to that neighborhood several times, I have talked to the residents, and I've been there some busy times, like Bike Week, that weekend, and honestly, there were a lot of parking places every time I've gone there. So when I hear the people that are opposed say that there's not a significant increase in parking and it's not a big problem, I'm inclined to, to vote against this.
I have questions. So this residential, if this were to become residential parking only, is that a, is that a, is that a meter and you have to have an RPP to park there, or is it a sign that says residential parking only?
It's, it's a sign. So if I, do you want me to briefly explain everything?
Sure, please.
Okay. So I did, I did call everybody on the street that I had phone numbers for, and I explained this whole process, the same thing, to them. For a residential, if it is a residential street, you just need to provide, you need to apply to, for a permit. You would need your tax bill, your utility bill, your registration, your deed, something like that, for proof, as we do on every residential street. When you renew, then you only need your registration. It is $35. Currently, it's $35 per vehicle, and you can buy guest passes for $29 for a placard, or you can buy individual ones online. As, in the public comment, I believe they spoke about a hardship. That actually wasn't, wouldn't even be a hardship on a corner property. Anybody on a corner property is eligible. So that's not considered a hardship, that they're actually eligible because they are on the corner property. And then when you have a permit, you can still only park 48 hours as any street in the borough. You still need to move even though you have a permit, but you can, you wouldn't get a ticket if you were parked there longer than two hours. Anybody parked there longer than two hours that didn't have a permit would, could possibly get a ticket. It's not something we can do every day. It's not something, you know, that street's not going to be every single day checked, but it is checked different times. There is no decals involved anymore. I think there was some discussion of decals. We actually haven't used decals in 12 years on cars. We are using license plates, so you just need, that's why we need the registration as well, so we can see that license plate number. And that gets put in the system. The officer comes by, checks the license plate. If they have a permit, they keep moving on. If they don't, they then electronically chalk the vehicle for two hours and come back two hours later.
On a, on any other street in the borough that is residential parking only that's similar to this street, how many signs are there that says residential parking only?
It depends on the street, the length of, length of the street, but typically, there's always one at the beginning, one at the end, and one in the middle. There could be some more throughout the middle there, depending on the length of the street. I would like to note also, there are some, some streets that are different and what, what I would recommend here, but Barlow Street is like half of a street. The Springs Avenue is one side of a street. Franklin Street also has like half of a street on a section, so it's not always the whole entire length of the street. And then there would be signs with arrows that, you know, in between these two signs are the residential parking.
Thank you. And the, in public comment was mentioned that there are some, there are some residents that are disabled on Hillcrest. Is there an opportunity there? We have had residents make an appeal to the council before for handicap accessible parking somewhat near their home. This is not a metered, a current metered street, however. Is that something that those residents could do?
They could. I believe I spoke with one gentleman and did say that he could request that. I'm not sure that the other one has a placard right now. They probably would be eligible, but they don't have one right now. But I did explain that process as well, and that it wouldn't be a designated space for them in particular, but that it would be signed with ADA markings.
Thank you for that.
I would also note that we have learned or have, have worked within the RPP system to designate spaces for persons with disabilities and have done that in the past, I think, in the last couple of years, we've done precisely that. So that would be something that could be entertained.
Thank you. I'm almost done, I promise.
I did have a quick thing, too. But I might answer your question, some of your questions. So I did provide a map, and I don't know if everybody was able to view that map. There is a number 20 on one side, which there's 20 spaces on that particular side of the street. There's a 16 on the other, so there's 16 spaces on that street. There's pluses and, oh, sorry, I didn't know it was up there. The pluses and minuses, these were taken from the original petitions. So the pluses were people that did request, that they signed the petition, they were in favor. The plus minus ones said they didn't carry their way, and then the minus ones. So you can see as you go, this is the bottom of the hill here on the left-hand side, and there's some, I just put two pluses there for Locust because I actually didn't look at the, where the exact address was, but as, in public comment, that one is right there. It's the exact same house as the Hillcrest, but just a different address. So that's the bottom of the hill, and as you can see, most of the pluses are at the bottom. And in being in parking in the many years that I've been here, it is, and most of us know that it's human nature, people don't want to walk far. So these people that are, you know, used to parking in the church lot or going on ghost tours, wherever they're going, they're, they're going to park at the bottom because they don't want to walk up the hill and walk farther away from where they're going. So I understand that that's probably where most of that problem is happening. I think that's most of it. But, so as far as my recommendation, I would have recommended either one side of the street or half of the street be residential parking. So the bottom half of the hill be residential, and then the top half wouldn't have to be. And so if you have a residential, if you purchased the residential permit, you could park on the bottom half, and if you didn't want to purchase one, you could park on the top half, or one side versus the other.
Yeah. The signage and the existing of the permit, though, are not a silver bullet for, you know, preventing some people from parking there, right? So a ghost tour that's happening at nine o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night, folks are going to park and assume that there's no enforcement, and they're probably right. So residents would still be met with the same issues. This isn't like a silver bullet to fix it. Have we ever, on any streets, split it, like, you know, cut the baby in half there? Like, can we do the, the north end of the, you know, the lower part of the hill is all RPP on both sides and then not at the top of the hill?
So that's how Barlow is. Now there is an alley to distinguish the separation. I don't know if that, that was way prior to my time here, so I'm not sure exactly what, how that was determined, but I would see, you know, as long as we have the signs in place, I would see no problem. We do have it split, not on an alley, on Franklin. And we, so we do have that in place already in, on a street in the borough.
I'll close out.
That, I was going to say, what we, we've done in the past, too, is we've gone out and taken measurements so that I can prepare an ordinance that specifically has the measurements of the, the street length of, so that you can very, very precisely designate what the, the RPP section is going to be, or we've used it for no parking, or to also designate parking zones, so it can be done like that.
I'll close out with, the petition aside, I actually heard from more people against it from Hillcrest than for it, but I like to meet people halfway. I would be willing to consider a portion of the street, perhaps the bottom of the hill or the side that has the most people asking for it, which looks like, it's very obvious there's one side that really wants it. But I think the bottom of the street, maybe. I'd be willing to go with you halfway, but honestly, people, like, like Mr. Moon said, it's, it's, it's not going to fix, it's, it's still going to be an issue, especially about the ghost tours.
Yeah. And, and I did, I did forget to mention, so, and I think, I'm not sure if anybody has the date, but we've had two different petitions on different streets since I've been here. John's Avenue was one, and that was actually denied. John's Avenue was, the complaint was, you know, same thing, they're not able to park. The findings were, it was mainly two times a year. It wasn't on weekends, it wasn't, you know, just, it was literally two times a year. So that was denied. The other one was Fourth Street, and that was just in 2021. And that is just a section between York Street and Hanover Street. And the findings on that was that there was one business that had a lot of employees that were parking on that street, and the residents could not park. And we did, you did enact that in 2021, and that has been very successful, and those people are, everybody is purchasing residential parking, and they are not having any issues with their parking. People are not parking. It was a business, it was during the day, so, you know, a ghost business might be a little different, but some of the other businesses, you know, we're here seven days a week. So, and I do know, in the past, the police would, you know, if they had time, the police can also check for residential parking as well.
When you said 35, you, you meant per month or per year?
Per year.
Per year. And the, the solicitor, our solicitor mentioned a hybrid. Was that, the hybrid was the street being split? Is that what he was, you were referring to?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah. I, I, even with the 35 a year, I still wouldn't be in favor of kind of imposing that on our residents. I don't think we need more bills. I'd probably actually be in favor of getting rid of that fee for our residents, like, borough wide, but that might just be me. So that's where I am with it.
And again, that fee's only charged for people who enter the system. It's not a mandatory across the, so if somebody does not wish to take advantage of it, they don't pay anything.
Yeah.
Okay. So I've heard a variety of opinions here. I, I think we have essentially three choices in front of us, and so I'm going to kind of go back down the line here. Our three choices are to do nothing and leave it as it is, to move forward with the June ordinance as it was written, which covers the entire street with an RPP permit, or to have the solicitor rewrite the ordinance with some hybrid model where part of the street is permitted and part of it is not. And I do feel compelled to point out that having him rewrite the ordinance does have costs to the boroughs associated with it. And we have already paid those costs to have the ordinance written that we voted on. We, we voted to have an ordinance written, and then we have defeated it ourselves, apparently.
Unanimously, I would point out also.
We did. Yeah. It was unanimous. So those are our three choices. Do nothing, move forward with the ordinance as we instructed the solicitor to write it, or to have the solicitor rewrite it with some amendment to our approach. So, Mr. Bales?
I'd be in favor of leaving the street as is.
Mr. Berger?
I would just like to say that when we went forward with it, we weren't aware of the opposition. There were a lot of residents that didn't even know about it until it was in, in the paper. And so I'm not going, I'm going to still listen to those people that are opposed.
Sure.
Which are substantial, and again, they, they say that there's not a significant problem. So status quo, just keep parking as it is.
I'm in favor of separating the street and accommodating both the residents who do not need RPP and those who need it. I've been in their shoes, having to park at Rite Aid parking lot when I was a renter.
I agree. I think that there's, there's, I like to try to meet people halfway. There's some that want it and there's some that don't. It's not mandatory to do, so the ones that don't want to do it don't have to do it. But I don't want to do the whole street. I say half.
So you're saying a hybrid model?
A hybrid model.
Patty just texted, I believe she's watching this on community media, she said she'd also support a hybrid model, so. So there's three of you who are in favor of a hybrid model and two who are in favor of leaving it status quo. I don't really have a strong opinion here either way, so I think the, I, I think we would pursue the hybrid model, I guess. Can everybody live with that?
Honestly, I think that's the only way that's, that's going to make both parties happy.
All right. The one thing I do want to say, though, because we do hear this a lot, Chris, is we, we do hear from folks who, you know, are finding out about it after we have spent three months on it. And in fact, we did receive a public comment that was, "Why was I not personally informed?" And I do get that sentiment. It is frustrating to have something done to change your quality of life without knowledge that it's about to happen. It's happened in our neighborhood, and I have found it very frustrating. But at the same time, I do want to point out, we have probably the most aggressive public information strategy that we've ever had in our history, right? You can sign up for email notifications of every single business and workshop agenda. You can watch most of our meetings, if not all of our meetings, online, on Facebook. I mean, we, we really have, we're not only putting it out there, but we're paying to put it out there even more. So I, I get the frustration, but at the same time, we don't have an, you know, a meaningful apparatus to call every single resident of the borough and let them know it's happening every two weeks. So it is upon, it is contingent upon everybody who lives here to stay informed as well. Does anybody else have any closing thoughts on that subject? All right. Let's move on to Chapter 15.
Yes. Ms. Fissell, would you like to pick us up where we left off? And the goal is to get through this tonight.
Are we on 15-700? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
That's what I was showing.
So for council, for following along here, we are on page 56 of 83, Section 15-700.
I am not showing any changes on 56, 57.
It looks like 15-702, there's just a language change there.
So this is where we were adding the, to go along, we're just updating language to add electronic because it was, you know, before applying online and things, it was all writ, handwritten permits. So that's just to update that we do permits electronically.
Same change in 15-712 on page 50, sorry, page 61. And then 15-714, effect of placement of meter bag on parking meter.
So we just changed the language a little bit. That says the meter bag issued to the qualified applicant shall be placed over a parking meter by the parking department or designated borough employee. That's just so that we don't have people removing and placing, and we know when they were placed and when they were removed.
Yep. All right. I think then we move on to 15-721.
So this is placement of open top refuse containers, so in the past...
I'm sorry, hold on.
Oops.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Did I skip one?
Well, so the previous page goes from 15-718 to, it looks like there's a chunk missing, and then there's Section C of something, and then we get to 15-1721. So it looks like 19... like 19 and 20 are missing there.
I think that, hang on, let me go to the second page. This was like another one, Harry had said, we had, it has something to do with the numbering on the top left.
It's the codification, how it's, how it has been printed by the publisher, the printer who does our codifications for us. And it is very confusing. During our review process, we've caught ourselves several times on that particular issue, and it's just how it's printed.
Okay.
So yeah, the next section that with a slight edit is Part C.
Placement of top refuse containers or similar receptacles in unmetered or metered parking, public parking zones.
Yes. So this was dumpsters previously, but in, you know, in the changing of times, we have pods, moving pods and trailers, things like that, that don't have wheels and the other things that are placed in there. So that would be the, or similar receptacle instead of just the open top refuse containers.
Okay. 15-722.
So here is also, make the application, it used to be in writing, but now it says electronic form. And then adding the language of the, or similar receptacle. And then, on, when you pay, when you purchase a permit online, you're required to pay that immediately at the time of the application. So that's what that one is.
All right, we see similar changes in 723, 724, 725.
Just updating all the language there.
And then that takes us to Part 8.
So this one I might need help with, because a lot of it's not even parking. So Charles, I don't know if you want to kind of pick up on this one, or if you want me to try to get, wing it here, but this was just changing. I know we discussed, it's always been snow emergency, but there's, we discussed it, and you know, there might not always be snow. It could be ice. It could be limbs down. It could be a lot of different things. So we talked about just changing that to weather emergencies.
Right. What that would do would allow a fair amount of discretion for that type of an emergency to be caused. And it would not specifically have to be a snow event that would empower. What you're doing is you're giving your manager some discretion to deal with emergency situations as, you know, in real time, if you will.
All right.
So in 802 there, the language is just changed to the weather emergency, and then, "No person shall park or leave standing any vehicle or permit any vehicle, or permit any vehicle to remain parked or standing following a declaration of a weather emergency by the mayor or in his or her absence or incapacity, the office of the manager, on any of the weather emergency routes designated in Part 8," which none of those changed. Previously, it had said about the two inches of accumulation, but this would change it to weather emergency declaration that is in effect.
Okay. 804.
That we have repealed on, because it talks about the snow tires or chains required. I don't think that's required anywhere anymore.
Okay.
Maybe other than the mountains.
All right, 15-805.
Towing, that does say, "The police department shall remove any vehicle that is blocking traffic for being parked during a weather emergency upon the issuance of an emergency, a weather emergency declaration."
Okay.
And that's no different than, I mean, that happens with the snow emergencies.
And then we have another repeal in 806.
This was just the penalty, oh, that was, I believe that was for the snow, was that the snow chains? "Any person that shall operate a vehicle upon any street of the borough if such vehicle shall become stalled during such a time a snow removal condition is in effect, and if stalling shall be, have been for the reason of failure to have such vehicle equipped as prescribed in." So that was the snow, that was the chains. So that's why we repealed that one.
Okay. Well.
I have a question before we move on to the next section. With respect to emergencies, is there anywhere else in the ordinance that would address emergencies that aren't related to weather? Like, were we to have some sort of other emergency, like, I don't know, terrorist attack or something that would require us to reroute traffic, close streets, that is unrelated to weather?
I believe that was early on on Chapter 15, was it not, Charles?
I can't, I don't remember. That's why I'm asking.
I feel like it was early on.
This section only does deal with weather.
With weather, so there is another emergency, a section. Okay. I can't remember my brain at this age.
If Charles wants to, will you want to look? And I'll keep going, or do you want to wait?
Keep going, I'll, I'll look.
Okay. So Part 9, persons with disabilities.
We've talked about this one. This was reserved, this part was reserved previously. So we thought to separate this out with persons with disabilities. Now that we have been adding, you know, there have been several requests for different streets. Some are metered parking, some are residential parking, some are, you know, no restrictions at all. So just as tracking purposes, we thought, you know, we'd set this section and put in the, how, what this would look like. So 15-901-1 says, "Applications for residential parking privileges for people with disabilities and disabled veterans can be submitted to the Gettysburg Borough Parking Department. Initial review will be completed upon receipt of the completed application and required documents. Final review of submitted applications will be conducted by the Borough Council during a normally scheduled council work session or any other meeting, duly advertised meeting."
Okay. Section 2.
2 is reserved parking spaces for persons with disabilities. The following areas are located on residential parking permit streets are hereby designated and reserved as parking spaces for the exclusive use by a person or persons with disabilities who reside on residential parking permit streets identified as follows. So these people, just to clarify, would still need a residential parking permit. The space is not for them. It is for anybody with disability placard or plate. And these were already voted on. Breckenridge Street, it doesn't have a measurement, but I can tell you it is the space closest to South Washington. And I believe that was just last year, maybe the year before. West High Street.
Do we need to detail that there?
Yeah, we will certainly add that once we, once we get the-
Being consistent.
Okay.
Get the ordinance into voting form.
Great. Section B.
The reserved parking spaces for exclusive use by persons with disabilities shall be designated by appropriate signage. In addition to penalties for violations for this provision, vehicles unlawfully parked in the space reserved for a person or persons with disabilities may be subject to towing. C is the need for ADA spaces across the borough shall be reassessed by the parking department annually at about the time the annual RPP renewal process to begin. So this is just so that we can, you know, some of these are homeowners, some are renters, and if they're no longer living there, or they're deceased, not to keep a space there that's not needed for the ADA, if there's not a single person on that street that would use it.
Okay. And then 3.
3, handicap parking violations occur a fee of, currently, that's X's, but currently that I believe is set by fee resolution, and that is $100 right now.
Okay, we need to adjust that language to not use the word handicap.
I do know all of the, that's the violation set up in the system, that is handicap parking on the ticketing system. That is how it is listed everywhere.
Yeah, we've talked about that in previous years, too. We need to begin addressing that wherever we find it.
Any other questions on adding Part 9, other than the term handicap versus ADA? I have an answer from Ms. Sanders. It's 15-104, temporary and emergency regulations. Mayor and/or in his or her absence or incapacity, borough manager and/or chief of police shall have the following powers to regulate traffic and parking temporarily in the time of an emergency.
Great. So then it looks like our next edit here is in 15-1002, residential parking permits.
So I just added, the time period is September 1st to August 31st, in the definitions, which it is listed later as well. But those residential permits always run September 1st to August 31st.
Okay. Next page just has some formatting, things.
Yeah, that formatting, I believe, and some of this formatting is messed up, but the idea was to do the street, the side of the street, and which streets it's between.
Then on page 69, we see some edits to the table. Starting with South Washington Street.
So that one was, the 200, there were some duplicates in here. So, South Washington, it said from High Street to a point, where is that, 209 feet. No, that's Carlisle Water. Where is, I'm sorry, Washington. Washington, it added, there is one missing there, actually. I'm not sure what happened to it. South Washington Street, that's the one Solicitor Eastman was saying. That one definitely has a measurement. South Washington runs from High Street up to a point of, I forget the footage, I'll have to look at where it was deleted, but it is Lincoln, sorry, I have to get down to the deleted part. I'm not sure why that got completely deleted out of there. The only part that should have been deleted out was the 200 block, because it was in addition, it was including High Street to Breckenridge. So it was a duplicate there. But it should say, Washington. So it said, "South Washington 200 block," said, "West High Street to Breckenridge." It also said, "South Washington Street, West High Street, and a point 209 feet south of Lincoln Lane." And then the, "South Washington Street, Johns Avenue, and Steinware." So that is correct. The only one that should have been eliminated is the 200 block, because it was already repeated from the West High Street to the point 209 feet south of Lincoln Lane. And then it picks up again at Johns Avenue and goes to Steinware.
Okay.
Let me get back up here. I believe was Springs added too, I think. Sorry, there's been so many different variations of it. I think the water street there was just a directional change, because there's only one parking, one side of parking. Springs Avenue is on there. So at some point, Springs Avenue was, and I believe both sides were residential parking, and at some point, when I was not here, one side of the street of Springs was removed. But in the, in the ordinance, the, both sides got removed, and, but the signs were never removed. It was only voted on one side.
Yeah, I believe that the north side was removed when, once there was no longer any residences on that block.
Gotcha. So, but for some reason, all of Springs got wiped out of residential parking, and we didn't realize it until I sat here and went through line by line. So that's what happened with that.
Great.
And the other ones are just directional.
Okay. Section 3.
That was a section that was moved to Part 9, I believe.
Yes. Sorry, I'm-
Great.
That was the reserved spaces for the persons with disabilities, so we just moved that to the whole Part 9.
Okay. Then it looks like we skip ahead to subsection 6, struck through. We're on page 71.
Oops, sorry, mine jumped too far ahead here.
That section was probably moved as well.
Yeah, I probably thought that was, which part, I'm sorry, what did you say?
Section 6 on page 71.
71. Yes, that is, yes, that was definitely the part that was moved to 9.
All right. On the next page in 15-1004, we have the addition of the language occupying the same space. So that's about moving vehicles on holidays, on days other than holidays.
Yeah, so there was question, you know, if you go to Walmart and you come back, can you, you know, that, you moved, but it's the same space. You have to pick a different space. Because it does go by GPS location, the handhelds are GPS location. If you're in the same space, somebody could say, "Oh, I parked in the exact same space."
How, how narrow does the focus of the GPS get on those?
Exact.
To within feet?
Oh, pretty exact, yeah. It pinpoints it, and, I mean, gives you the coordinates, everything of it, so. It's very, very close. We also have photos, you know, that we can generally tell how close a vehicle was, but that is why it is designated a space. We'd like it designated per space.
Okay. That'll take us to 15-1007.
Matt, in 15-1005, number 2, it says, "Display of permits. A permit or decal shall be displayed."
Oh.
I think we're using the license plate now, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, correct.
So we'll strike that whole section.
Yep.
Good catch. All right.
I think the next one I'm showing is 1007.
Yes.
So that is the petition process. Previously, it was just called the study period, but this would, you know, now has Section A to add the petition process. Upon the request of a resident whose primary residence is situated along a street that does not permit metered parking, shall be provided by the parking department a petition to be presented to the Borough Council for consideration of adding and/or removing RPP parking provisions. The petition shall require the name, address, contact information, and original signature of each resident desiring to add and/or remove RPP parking regulations that are next to the primary residence.
Okay.
I just added that K in there, that's why it's blue.
Oh, I don't.
I saw it. I saw it.
Oh.
Shows up as green.
Yeah.
Parking department.
Mine hasn't even hit it yet. Um, oh, I see where it's, mine just says paring, yes. I haven't, your update didn't hit mine yet, so. So then B, the council authority, Gettysburg Borough Council has the sole authority to add and/or remove RPP parking designations to borough streets after a completed petition is presented to them for consideration.
Okay.
One zero zero nine. This was disposal of motor vehicle, but cur, we would currently be calling it updating permit. Um, and that is because, um, it's just removing the language. If they had stickers on the car, so if you were disposing of your car, you had to get rid of, you know, you had to get a new sticker, get rid of the sticker. Um, but since we don't use decals anymore or stickers, um, it is just the license plate. So people just call now and update either, sometimes they keep the same plate and just update the make and model of their car. And then sometimes they do need to update the plate, depending if they received a complete new one.
Got it.
And Pennsylvania does, um, I'm not sure if anybody's received one, but they do change plates every so often. They get rid of, I think they're currently getting rid of the letter E plates. So the people that have had plates that start with E have been calling and saying, hey, they replaced it. Can I just change the plate? So we just update it in the system. So that's what that language is.
All right. All right, the next changes are fifteen one oh, I'm sorry, eleven oh two on page seventy-seven. We had an acronym for the Racehorse Alley. And then fifteen eleven oh three, we have some language changes there in section three.
Yeah, so that was the, uh, flat rate parking shall be charged to the borough, shall be charged for parking in the parking garage during certain designated events held within or near the borough of Gettysburg. Mainly, this was, uh, like Christmas festival, things like that, I believe. But, um, this would say, uh, and this does call out the theater, the Gettysburg Hotel. That was already previously in there. But we would be adding, a permit will be issued by the parking department in advance of the event. And then, um, the Borough Manager is, uh, authorization by the Borough Council to designate and schedule the dates and times where a flat rate shall be in effect, um, for the parking in the garage. At the conclusion of the event, the parking department will inform the office of the manager of the amount to be invoiced. The office of the manager will then, then issue an invoice to the event coordinator. So this was, um, this would be like thing, uh, big events coming to the hotel that you discussed, um, doing a flat rate, but like the pencil, the PennDOT parking or, you know, one of those large conferences. Um, so that would be the flat rates. Or something like we just did with the emergency stay, that was a flat rate. And we invoice the hotel after the fact. We, we set up all the permits and we invoice them, so.
Great. Uh, section four, little language tweak about mobile payment.
Mobile payment added.
Section five has a language tweak with reservations.
We just duplicated, it does say the reservation of the parking space, but we just wanted to make sure everybody understood that that space is reserved.
Got it. Uh, I think that takes us to fifteen eleven oh seven penalties and violations. Sorry, penalties for violation.
So this is, I believe we did this early on in some of them and just making sure that, uh, it was noted that the overtime violations are the only ones with the discount.
All right, section two.
Section two, the same thing, we did this early on, and that was changing that seven calendar days to fourteen um, to allow the additional forty dollar payment between day eight and fourteen.
All right. And then fifteen twelve oh one. We have a change, uh, as to dispensation.
Um, on the parking ticket definition, um, it looks like it's, uh, instructing the owner or the operator to report to the parking department or the officer of the manager.
Yep. All right, fifteen twelve oh four boot removal. We have a ch, something struck there.
So this was, um, nobody really understood this, but it, it says that, um, depositing the collateral in the appearance before a district justice, um, that has never done, been done since I was here. I'm not sure what that even was, but we don't, I mean, to boot, they just have to pay the, the amount that they're owed on the tickets.
Sure. All right, section two.
This is the owner of a boot of vehicle or other person authorized by the owner shall have the right, um, to po, to a post immobil, immobilization hearing limited to a determination of the validity of the booting. Such hearing must be requested within ten days after the vehicle is booted and shall be conducted by the office of the manager.
All right. I believe that takes us to the end.
It is.
That is the end?
That's the end.
Everyone comfortable with those edits, amendments, additions, and deletions?
Everybody good?
All right.
All right.
We'll send the Solicitor to, uh, put this in.
Thanks to all of you for working on that. It, it was clearly a ton of work and reviews, so thank you all. All right, so that's going to take us to the comprehensive rezoning. Uh, Mr. Whitmore could not be with us tonight. So we have a special celebrity guest here to stand in for him.
Thanks, Council President Moon and members of council. Troy Troax, Michael Baker, International. I was a consultant that helped early on in the process and get pulled back in to pinch hit once in a while. Tonight, I'm doing so for John. But I just have a short presentation. John gave me some instruction of what to put together for your work session tonight, so bear with me. Uh, so just some topics here, what is zoning? Um, the enabling authority for zoning in PA, some of the purposes of object, of purpose and objectives for the rewrite, the rewrite process, um, some suggested next steps, uh, for council's consideration, and any questions you have. So what is zoning? Uh, just by definition, hopefully everybody understands it pretty well. It's just the act or process of partitioning municipalities like the borough here into various, uh, land use zones that are regulated accordingly. Uh, and then also they're mapped. So there's a text portion of a zoning ordinance and a map portion of a zoning ordinance. Uh, your zoning regulations consist currently of, and codified, uh, in your code under chapter twenty-seven and also includes the map. Uh, in Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code is the enabling authority, uh, for municipalities to adopt, amend, et cetera, zoning ordinances, and specifically section six oh one, um, of, uh, the MPC, as we planners finally know it as, governed zoning. Some of the purpose and objectives, um, since your existing code was enacted back in two thousand eight, um, that's well over, you know, almost, uh, thirty years, if my math serves me correctly here. In a couple of years, we'll be close to thirty. Uh, but, uh, it, it, it goes through various types of, uh, enforcement, uh, technical issues, deficiencies are often found, variances are issued. Um, so that's something that over time, it starts to then become, you know, it's time to update your ordinance. Plus, too, you had a joint comprehensive plan. The MPC really looks at the consistency between a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan looks at forward thinking about future land uses, et cetera. So you try to have some consistency with what that future land use is trying to, uh, tell as well. So again, it was both a, a various kind of issues, technical issues, et cetera, that were identified in your zoning text. And then we took a very comprehensive look at your zoning match, map, which I'll also, uh, get into. So the process, uh, you've been at this quite a while. Um, this started in earnest where I was started with a steering committee. Uh, Council Member Moon, you're on that committee among many other members of the community. Harb was represented, uh, some business owners were represented. Planning Commission members were on that. So we tried to have a dichotomy and a mix, um, of, of representatives. But we had twelve meetings with that committee. Um, we worked, um, pretty exhaustively about, uh, going through the entire ordinance and rewriting the entire ordinance, not throwing the whole thing out, but really trying to reorganize it, update it with, uh, the, the technical deficiencies, but also a lot of new language in terms of uses. Um, and then I think, uh, what took a lot of time was evaluating the zoning map, um, et cetera. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. There was during that time, uh, between, uh, early on, so we started in earnest in April of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, that committee met, met consecutively for twelve months through April, two thousand twenty-four. In October of two thousand twenty-three, the fall, over at the, uh, rec center, uh, on Long Lane, we had a public meeting town hall. I think it was, you know, fifty-some people. It was very well attended, had very good dialogue, a lot of good, uh, interaction, um, and a lot of, uh, good input was obtained through that town hall. Um, starting in May of twenty twenty-four through today, um, I know John has been facilitating meetings of the Planning Commission. I actually, uh, guest appeared, as, uh, President Moon would say, uh, back at a council meeting, I think a year ago in the fall, uh, over at the rec, uh, rec hall, that meeting was held again to answer more questions. So bottom line is, you've been at this for a while. This has not been taken lightly. It's not been done under the cloak of darkness. Um, uh, the public town hall, all those planning commission meetings were very well advertised in terms of input. So I like to think that you've, you've done yeoman's work, uh, in terms of the due diligence necessary to look at this, uh, very, uh, you know, from a committee that had various subject matter experts to the planning commission, um, et cetera, is where you're at now. So the new ordinance rewrite includes a new consolidated and streamlined text. That's the zoning ordinance. You went from, you know, I think one thing that our process looks at, that I've been doing a lot of zoning work, um, is that we try to, you know, make it more streamlined and efficient. So you have twenty-one articles right now codified that make up zoning. That's pretty daunting for someone trying to find something. So what we've done, and I'll show you next slide, we've consolidated that down into five. Uh, so streamlined, consolidated, condensed, um, it may not gotten any, uh, uh, shorter uh, and it does, as ordinances go, but it definitely compartmentalized and made it streamlined. Uh, one thing that it actually does is has a comprehensive set of permitted uses with definitions. We took a look at a lot of issues in terms of, uh, like accessory dwelling units, for example, was a big topic. Um, and then we also have applied what we call form-based standards. And I'll talk about that with respect to the zoning map. Um, the updated zoning map, um, takes those form-based. So what form-based is, it's not just looking at the use of a building. It's looking the form and function like the design. You're very concerned about historic preservation. You know, typically, you know, well-established communities like Gettysburg Borough has kind of a theme of architecture, you know? That's what that form looks like, looks at. So it's, it's less focused on use as it is more focused on what are we trying to achieve? What was the intent of this block? How it was built? What the setbacks are, if there are any setbacks? Um, and then some cases where you have districts that have totally gone away from that urban form. So you might have a Rite Aid or some type of drugstore, like a commercial oriented business, being built that's taken away type of, taken away from an urban form. We even looked at that as part of the, what we call the character area analysis. And, um, and in addition to that, we've also updated your zoning map to have it consistent with, uh, color coding, with the American Planning Association land-based, uh, classification standards. So I'll just, you know, digress back on a topic. This is your existing on the left. These are the numerous number of articles that are under chapter twenty-seven. You can see then on, on the right-hand side, the five new parts, if you will. Anything in yellow, um, on the left has been put into general zoning provisions on the right. Anything in green in the left has been putting in, has been placed either in zoning districts or zoning uses. So if it's zoning districts, it really focuses on the map, the purpose of those new zoning districts, and any of the form-based regulations that also ha, deals with height, setback, things of that nature under zoning districts. Anything dealing with uses, uh, a use permitted, et cetera, all defined, it's under part three. Anything blue on the left, um, then some, is included in supplemental regulations under four. And then ultimately, we end up with a set of definitions like all ordinances have. Um, some other user features that we have, um, in this ordinance is a cross-reference table of all the uses. And it's categorized by principal, accessory, or temporary. And then within the principal uses, you have a categorization of residential, um, lodging, commercial, industrial, institutional. There's a whole categorization of, of uses there. And then all of those uses then are cross-referenced with the zoning districts, um, where they are either permitted by right, uh, by special exception, um, or if they're not permitted at all, which would be a blank cell. And just for an example, each of the zoning districts has a, what we call a form-based sheet uh, that has, uh, dimensional area standards plus some graphic illustrations that help with the interpretation and the administration of the ordinance. Uh, the character areas, again, this is where we started with the committee. This is, we didn't do anything until we really got the districts down. Again, based upon the existing character, we did onsite field surveys. We used the, the, the technology at our fingertips. Google Earth, uh, Google Street Maps were great. Uh, looked at the parcel information from the county. Um, and then really what it does, it helps us establish what the built environment is today. Um, and what we do, we calibrate the zoning setbacks. And oftentimes, we'll find that your current setbacks are not matching, your Balkan area standards are not matching what was actually built in the, in the built environment. So what we're doing is taking this character area and calibrating physically the Balkan area standards plus the form and function of that built environment. So here's just a couple examples. If you look at the downtown core, what's called the T-five, we use what's, what we call an urban, rural to urban transect, but it goes from the, the most dense all the way out to the lower density areas in different districts. So what we identified is your downtown core, you know, characterized primarily by three to four-story buildings with no front setback and minimal or no side setbacks. Um, accessory buildings, front alleys with minimal or no setback. Here's a couple photo illustrations. And then you can see on the map, pretty much the downtown core area along Baltimore Street, uh, going into further, closer down to, uh, beyond Breckenridge, for example. And then just north of the square and east and west of the square, you can see. So again, that's, we're, we're seeing common types of build environments is what you're seeing in that map. Here we have instances where you have auto-oriented. So anything in red on the map is where you have more, you know, instead of walk-up or sidewalk type of, of businesses or residences, you, these are basically, you had to get in your car. They have large frontage parking, either in the front or side of the building. Um, so again, this is along the Steinware Avenue and various places where you have more of the, the suburban type of feel of environment, um, in the borough. Um, and then scattered throughout is a lot of high-density neighborhoods. Um, you can see them in orange. So again, I didn't want to go through every single one, but what it does, it starts to build out this character area map based upon the analysis that we did. And what it starts to do, this really starts to define what your current zoning map is on the left, the character area analysis in the middle, and then ultimately, the map that you see on the right, and that's what's on the board. This is your current map today. So even after we left with the steering committee, the Planning Commission has made, uh, a couple changes to this. They've even gone through and further evaluated, um, the map itself. Um, you know, again, where you can start to see some changes, you know, we, we really pulled back on the, the downtown, uh, zoning district here, the Old Town. Um, this is all based upon the character area analysis, and you can see how that's been interpreted in the existing zoning. Some of the areas here going out, uh, Lincoln Way, uh, West, um, for example, were, uh, right now zone commercial. If we look at the character area map, uh, we're starting to see a, a change in that in terms of the proposed zoning. We did retain the old, the historic district overlay, not that it's missing from here, but wanted to make sure we showed it where it's at in context of the existing zoning, uh, today. And that was put into, uh, practice as well. Um, so again, the other thing that we looked at was some, some basic, trying to refine your nomenclature. the other thing that we looked at was some some basic, trying to refine your nomenclature for zoning districts. So on the far right-hand side are your existing zoning districts, and the middle right there is your new zoning districts that have been characterized. You can see I put the red box in because some of the moderate-density residential R-two districts and the residential office district, RO, had a lot of kind of the micro-changes in it in terms of some of the new districts that were identified, if you will, and it really was based upon that character area analysis, and also what the committee and planning commission thinks could happen there in those areas in the future with potential changes, like Gettysburg College on North College Street. We spent an enormous amount of time, both at the committee level, and I know the planning commission did too, because they came back with this to help do some updates to the zoning map, how what they might think the college might be doing with some of its properties along College North, on Carlisle Street, rather. So that's, so again, a lot of interpretation, a lot of input was gone into the map. Again, just a side-by-side comparison, if you look at the way the left legend of your current zoning, this is your enacted zoning, and your proposed zoning districts, where you see those changes are in the mixed-use districts. So that's where you have, like, for example, residential office, tourist commercial, general commercial, old town, and residential office development. We've looked at that now as low-impact neighborhood commercial, historic corridor neighborhood commercial, neighborhood, neighborhood commercial, Carlisle Street neighborhood commercial. In fact, that Carlisle Street NC four, your planning commission actually identified, and that was added following the steering committee's work. We've also added a civic institution district, which really encompasses either your parkland, the school property, or the Gettysburg National Military Park, and separated that out from the Gettysburg College properties, and also the seminary properties included in that, too. So where the next steps are, again, this is one thing that John has asked me, and your borough manager, Mr. Gable, asked me to provide some recommendations. I mean, my thought is, your planning commission, the steering committee spent a year, your planning commission has spent a year. I would hope that your planning commission would look towards the next couple of months of wrapping their work up. I can't speak for them, I'm not speaking for them. But according to the Municipalities Planning Code, if you look at the requirements in your solicitor, Mr. Eastman can verify and confirm, so I appreciate that, Harry. But the Municipalities Planning Code requires one public meeting, advertised meeting of the planning commission, to consider recommending a proposed ordinance to be sent to council for enactment. There also is a required forty-five-day public review and comment period. It must go to the county, it must go to the school district, and if you wish, you could send it to neighboring municipalities. It's not required, but it's definitely required for the county and the planning commission, or the school district. And then finally, there would be a public hearing. You're required as council to have one public hearing at a minimum on the proposed zoning ordinance and map, and you must vote on enactment within ninety days after the last public hearing. So again, nothing's precluding the planning commission from holding multiple meetings, which they've already have. They just have to kind of set the tone of when they think that that public meeting to actually incur that forty-five-day review process, and then when that public hearing would be scheduled, because then you'd have to enact. So it's a little bit of a timing issue at this point, when there's kind of an official go moment. So right now, everything's in, not saying flux, it's still very much in draft, but at some point, your planning commission would get to a point, they would want to recommend an ordinance to move forward. But that would be my recommendation. I would think if you'd follow the schedule, I would hope by the end of this year, again, I would have to take the planning commission's direction, your direction, but I think because you've worked on it so long and it's been so well-vetted, I would think it's about time now, year three, literally, to put this enactment and start to, and get it in force. So again, John couldn't be here tonight. He's your director of planning, as you know, but I'd be happy to take any questions that you that you have. Hopefully I can answer them. If not, we'll get answers back to you through John.
The only clarification I would offer is on slide seven, that timetable actually could go back about ten months further than it does. We started discussing this in the summer of twenty-two and allocating the budgetary funds to secure the services of Michael Baker that summer. We were in pre-planning on this, and then in January of twenty-three, before we were able to start meeting with you.
That's good.
It's actually a much, much, much more involved process.
Yeah, well, that's even better, right, Council President?
Yeah. All right, questions, concerns, considerations? All right. All right, we know we have a lot of work ahead of us. We have been sent an ordinance. We will begin our review of it here. I believe with our next workshop, the intent is to have a joint meeting with the planning commission so they can hopefully discuss some of their deliberations and decisions they came to, so we have a better sense of where their draft deviates from the steering committee's draft. Does that about cover it?
It does. I guess the only question I have, knowing that budget season isn't far away, once we get into October, our normally scheduled work sessions will not entirely, but will be consumed considerably with those considerations for budget. So is there an appetite to adding a few work sessions moving into the fall so you can advance this by the end of the year?
So I think we're going to kind of have to play it by ear here over the next couple of months. We'll see what starts to shake out through August and September through our preliminary discussions. As we get into October, November, December, we will have meetings that are just exclusively budget. So if we do wish to move forward aggressively with this by the close of the calendar year, we would need to schedule some additional meetings. So one strategy would be, we could have, you know, a budget meeting on a Monday and a zoning meeting on a Tuesday. We, I mean, we all have a ton of reading to do to understand the three different drafts, but there's not a lot of daylight between those drafts. There's really only a few places where the staff is asking for clarification of council's intent. Bearing in mind that the purpose here was never to create a document that was a radical reimagining of what we already had, it was supposed to create a simplification and a rectification of a document that had been sort of mangled over twenty years' time. So I think that's what we're looking at here. This is our, one of our legislative priorities for the year. It would be ideal to be moving on this by the first of the year. So I think we will most likely be looking at additional workshops to get this over the finish line. All right, anything else? Questions, comments? All right.
Thank you.
Troy, thanks for your time tonight. We really appreciate you pinch hitting.
Anytime, anytime.
I just want to say, throughout this whole process, Michael Baker International, you specifically, have been absolutely wonderful to work with.
Thank you.
We appreciate not just your help with this, but also your guidance. Thank you for the time you've given the borough.
I've always enjoyed working with the borough and everybody. Thank you very much.
All right, that'll take us back to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. You can speak on any topic. We do ask you to use the podium. Please use the microphone, state your name and address of residence, and please limit your comment to five minutes. Is there any public comment? Please.
Sorry if I read it. My name is Monica Ogra, and I live at one-on-one Springs Avenue, Ward Two. Okay.
Can you pull the mic a little closer?
Yeah. Respected members of the Gettysburg Borough Council, thank you for the opportunity to offer a public comment this evening. Before I offer my comment, I'd like to sincerely thank the members of the planning commission and the Borough Council Working Group and steering committee members, and the consultants from Michael Baker Incorporated, who have worked so hard on the municipal code and zoning updates over the past two years. The resulting document is impressive, and I appreciate that a ton of work has gone into this. I'm here tonight as a resident of Ward Two and want to use this comment to, A, highlight two new things in the draft rezoning document that I hope will stay in the new plan as you proceed with phase three, and B, flag some worries and concerns about specific details in the section on NC three that came up for me in the process of reviewing the sections relevant to this category. So first, the new things that I really welcome, appreciate the spirit behind, and hope stay in, are the creation of the new neighborhood commercial zones, which I think as an alternative to general commercial, do take into account the reality of the way things have changed. I've lived here for twenty-plus years, and I've seen some changes, but certainly the history of those changes predates my residence here. So in general, I think those are a good idea, and I think they seem like they're going to help. Number two, the creation of a new category specifically intended to regulate and restrict the location of smoke shops. I think these are really good new things in the document, and I'm very happy to see them in there. So to my suggestions, I'm a, all right, I'll just read what I've written. I'd like to suggest you consider keeping the one hundred Buford Avenue parcel in the existing zoning designation, and I'm aware that, oh, the map has come down, but I'm aware that that map went through a lot of revision and discussion over the past two years, so I don't want to deny that at all. But the, living right close to it and being on the ground to that parcel, it is very different from the rest of the zone. It's, those of you who are familiar with the area will understand what I mean, but it's surrounded by residential, and it's currently zoned as residential. So it functions as an apartment building with several ground floor suites for commercial use, which are permitted by special use for personal services, low-impact personal services, and there's very limited parking. Some uses that are allowed for that parcel as part of the NC three would not be appropriate for that specific location, in my opinion, and keeping the property in the existing zoning designation seems like it would help maintain the status quo, which is what I've heard several council members and planning commission members say was a goal of this project, was to not make major changes. I recognize that that might be a big ask. So I would also like to propose that if that stays in there, that a really close look at the uses by right be undertaken, just to make sure that those are actually appropriate as a default for that spot, if it stays in that zone. The second proposal or idea is to modify the definition of the new category that is listed in chapter twenty-seven, restricted use category number seventeen, which is called electronic cigarette/vaporizer store/smoking places, which I think means vape store, smoke shop. As I said, I think this is a good idea, but I can't help but understand, I can't help but wonder why the threshold for what constitutes a vape shop is set is fifty percent of floor space, as opposed to value of stock in trade or some other metric. And I also worry that fifty percent is a very high number. Would a shop selling forty-nine point nine percent of its merchandise by either metric be fundamentally different and any more appropriate to those neighborhood commercial zones where it would otherwise be disallowed? I ask this body to please consider lowering this amount to something that's closer to the ten percent that adult establishments are bound to, or at the very least, a number that's much more in keeping with the spirit of the new category. That's my last suggestion for now, for your consideration. I've seen how thoughtful the discussions by this body can be, so I hope these comments are helpful to you as you work on finalizing this very important document. Thank you again for your time and consideration and for your service to the borough.
Thank you. Public comment? All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session.